Good evening, Nels Gundo. If you could all please rise, we're gonna have the invocation led by either Rabbi Lopson or Tracy Weaver, and the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember Pimentel.
Dear Lord, as we are here this evening, grant us the gift of understanding and willing to work together. Graciously bestow upon us the gifts and blessings required for the work before us. We ask your guidance in thinking during the meeting so that our knowledge may result in the growth and prosperity of our city. Amen.
(inaudible) of America and to the Republic for one nation under God, indivisible, with the redeemed justice for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Here.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Here.
Councilmember Brenn?
Present.
Mayor Boiles?
Here.
Thank you. Now is the time of public communications.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, councilperson, all of you here in the room and at home. My name is Tracy Miller Zarni. I'm currently serving as the Chair of the City's Environmental Committee, and I'm here on the committee tonight to wish you all a happy Earth Week next week, and to invite our community to come out, talk to us friendly environmental committee members at our annual Earth Week Farmers Market booth, which is going to be next Thursday during Farmers' Hours. At the Farmers' Market, you'll also find members of EDco staff on hand to answer any questions you may have about the upcoming two our three bin waste hauling services, and invite the kids to play some fun games with their new bins so we can all learn how to sort what where. That'll be fun to do together next week. In the meantime, I hope you've all been reading your mail and everything you can about our new trash transition. We've got at least these three things in mail so far. So hopefully you've got those and didn't recycle them, but you read them, but actually recycled them. If you haven't those in your mail, be sure to go check the city website, Facebook postings that the city's on. All of those have all the information you need to ramp up, get ready to sort trash the right way in our city. There's also an EDco website that is www.edcodisposal.com/lgundo. It's special for our city, has everything you need. It's all there. And we are there next week in person with them to help you talk through this process and work through their transition together. In the meantime, though, I just say that maybe now that we're resetting this, it's time for everybody to take a moment and reset some practices, lifestyles, place. Just a couple of recommendations that we would offer our residents and businesses is maybe, do you ask yourself, do you use a water bottle or coffee mug when you can? Do you really need a disposable straw in your beverages? Sprinkle, make sure they're only running during the sunset and later before forest hours, and that they're not watering our sidewalks and nonplanted areas. I have a couple neighbors who are watering the street quite well. To our office owners, do you have water bottle, bottle stations, or, you know, your office space, those old school water coolers as well? Do you incentivize our cooling or get work some other way other than a single car, via bike or via public transportation perhaps? Does your office go digital with the dials as much as possible, or print double sided when you absolutely have to? Print as a paper? Restaurant owners, do you have to give everybody a straw when they walk in, or can you wait until they ask for one? There's many things you guys can think about out there. So we hope you'll take the week opportunity to evaluate what you do and maybe make a change for a more greener practice. We're grateful to all of you that believe in making Elsagundo a more sustainable, equal-minded community, and we are here to support those efforts. We hope you'll come this week at the Farmers' Market. Thank you.
Sorry, I left my container at home. I feel guilty. Is Ken Berkman gonna jump out of a trash can at the ... awesome. Public communication is open, thank you.
Good evening, our members of the city council. This evening, I'd like to bring to your attention, to the community's attention, a wonderful gift, a local grant by Chevron. Last week, we took delivery of a check in the sum of $158,000. This was a local grant from Chevron Corporation to purchase a new fire engine on behalf of our fire department in our community. This was part of an ongoing conversation we had that was part of a consent decree order, and that consent decree Chevron acknowledged some additional needs within the community and outside of the consent decree. As a local grant purchased a fire engine as well as a rescue ambulance that that fire engine is in the development phase right now. It's being built as we speak with the hopes of it being completed by the end of this year. And I just want to take this moment to thank Chevron for that local grant. And Mr. Rod Spackman is here as well, and I'm sure he'll probably want to say a few remarks. Thank you.
Just very few. Thank you, Mr. Rod Spackman, Republican Governor Affairs Manager for Chevron here in the LA area. I want to say how much we appreciated working with the chief and his staff on particular projects. So we've got two pieces of the puzzle. The chief referenced them. We had to pay, we had to pay upfront for the fire engine. That's kind of typical, right? You've got to pay to play, and so they're building it somewhere out in the, out in the Midwest, and hopefully sometime in the fall, we'll see it here in Elsagundo. With that, then, there'll be a second, there'll be a second, second grant. The total, the total package, which is about a million dollars, a little bit shy of a million dollars for it and the piece of equipment that they, they ended up needing here recently, which is a new ambulance because of some things that arose in the city. So for us, this is a great opportunity. It was in our wheelhouse. Safety's a big deal to us. Work very closely there with the city's fire department. Obviously, we have our fire department. We really did, again, appreciate the opportunity to work with the chief and his staff, figure out how we could best fill a couple of that otherwise the city was going to have to cover itself. That I just thanks again to, to all of you and to the, to the chief and his for the work they do frankly every day to help ensure the public safety in Elsagundo.
Thank you, Ron. Thank you, Chevron. Much appreciated. Thank you, Chief. Tough act to follow. Mark, no pressure.
Good evening. My name is Prince. I'm a resident here in Elsagundo. I've got two kids in the middle school. On behalf of the PTA, I just want to thank, thank you all for allowing us to once again run for Ed, which is coming up in a little under two weeks. We're in our 28th year. It's probably the most important fundraiser for the PTA. And we just wanted to show appreciation, and folks are the first ones to get the 2018 raise these. So I'm just gonna leave these with you folks, and that's all I have. Thank you again.
Awesome. Thanks, Mark. What's the date? A week from Saturday?
I'm sorry, 28th, a week from Saturday.
April 28th, so you got ...
Or is that the 27th?
You've got 12, 11 days to start running, Scott.
Should I leave these?
Thank you very much, Mark. Thanks for sharing your time.
Didn't you tend to be the person that beat you?
Okay, is that it for communications? All right, seeing none. Public communications are closed. Thank you again to Chevron for the generous check. Thank you for that. You, Mark and Tracy, thank you for all your leadership with the Earth Week. All right, any council comment on public communication? Take that as, that as a note. All right. Consideration of a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda, but it'll only ...
So move.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Five oh. All right, B. I think this is where I read the public hearing information. Is that right? Thank you. All right, this is the time and place here to fix for a public hearing. Considered an impossible action regarding approval of an amendment to environmental assessment number DA 1154, amendment to specific plan number P 16-01, amended stated condition approval, and a second amendment to develop an development agreement number DA 16-01, amending the requirement that the developer have six affordable units for low, very low, and extremely low quality households within the residential development to number of affordable units to eight, and to allow the eight units to be purchased by moderate income households. City Clerk, are the orders given in a timely manner?
Yes, it was.
Thanks. Has any written communication been received regarding this public hearing?
Yes, it was, and you've received it.
Thank you. Is now open. Mr. Carpenter, who will present?
Director of Building and Greg McClaner, Planning Manager, are gonna share this presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, evening, Mayor Pro Tem. So I'm gonna give you a brief background on this project before we discuss the, the change that's proposed. So this goes back to 2012, March of that year. The 540 East Imperial Avenue specific plan was adopted, and in that plan, there were two options. First option was about 300 units, about assisted living and senior housing. And the second option, which was not immediately available, was for 24 single-family homes and 34 multifamily homes. Option one had 46 affordable units distributed among various income classes of low, low, very, and extremely low. Option two had six affordable units in each classes. In 2015, though, after marketing the property for option one, they decided that option two was gonna have to be the actual development. So by September 2016, the city was around to approving option two. And a year later, D.R. Horton, who was the developer, asked for a modification to the development agreement and the specific plan, offered cash in lieu of providing the six affordable units. Staff was not receptive to that option. Negotiated them off and on until they came back with another option, which was to provide eight moderate income units rather than the six in the lower category. Staff took the proposal to consultant, our housing consultant, Michael Baker International, and they ran the numbers too and came to the same conclusion that anyone who qualified for the extremely low and the very difficult time sustaining the housing, because these are condominiums, they're not rentals. So why does that make a difference? Because all other things being equal, homeowners also pay property tax, and they also pay maintenance eventually, hopefully all along. But, and in this case, because it's kind of chowai fees. Chowai fees are not discounted by income, because that's a burden on the others. So everybody pays the full freight. So we're sympathetic to the idea. We do not wish to see people fail just because they got lucky to get the, if they can't afford to stay there. So moving the affordability range to the moderate is good, because the numbers show that those people will be sustainable in those. We, they proposed eight, which is two more than we would have otherwise. And so we've accepted that to recommend to you in the resolution and ordinance. Issues have come up on the housing element, and I wanted to briefly, toughly touch on that. Per the government code, the city must maintain affordability inventory in each of the income categories during the life of its housing element. And in the event that that inventory is no longer sufficient, which was the case here, we have one half of a year to remedy that, which we are working on. The law also explicitly states that we are not obligated to withhold approval of an application if it puts us out of compliance. In other words, it's our problem, it is D.R. Horton's problem. So we are not obligated to refuse to approve this request. Okay? We're also not obligated to, I just wanted to, not obligated to refuse to approve. So city staff is working with a consultant to help us to review our inventory. We think that we have adequate inventory, but we'll have to report to HCD, which is the Housing Community Development Department. So we're working on that now, and leveraging, we're also taking off of direction that we got from council in a previous meeting to accept the idea of possibly making changes to development standards or occupancy density in some certain limited area. That may also help us in this. That's for another problem. Right now, the question before you is, should we accept an offer of eight moderate incomes in lieu of two extremely low, two very low, and two low from Horton? concludes my report. Available if you have any questions.
Okay, do we do questions now, now, or after I was the, or open it for public input? Okay. Would anyone from D.R. like to speak? If you could just state your name, please. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor Mayor Boiles and city council members, I'm Mary Ann Adriatico, Vice President and Division Counsel, D.R. Horton, Southern California. We're extremely delighted about presenting to city council for approval tonight the force of affordable housing project in the city. First, I want to thank staff for working with the applicant throughout the process. They did a good job. The staff report is impeccably done, the analysis thorough and well supported, and the applicant wants and agrees with staff's conclusions and the staff report. By way of background, D.R. Horton is one of the largest builders in the country. We pride ourselves in providing what other builders cannot, is affordability. Building and delivering affordable homes for families are at the core of our business, and our success has in large part been built on that. To be a part of the city's efforts to bring affordability into a market where families across the income spectrum are simply priced out is to execute on something that is fundamentally important to the company. Not many people, except those that were involved, know how much work went into this past year. We, along with staff, spent a considerable amount of time and resources in analyzing the range of options for implementing affordable housing program in the city. At the first ever affordable housing program in this city, these were chartered waters. Oftentimes, this meant proposing the option, staff rejecting it, the applicant to draw the board, and repeating these same steps over and over. But throughout this process and the past year and a half, the applicant and staff showed their mutual and unwavering commitment to finding a solution to the affordable housing dilemma. Being the first affordable housing project for the city today, that was just a slight bit of pressure to be successful. Even without that pressure looming, we all still wanted this project to be a success. As discussed in this in the report, we, staff, took a hard look at setting aside the six units, and it's two at extremely low income, two at very low income, and two at low income, as originally calculated in the project's entitlements. We concluded that we were setting up these families for failure and putting them in a situation to be escorted from their homes in due course. Then, then we determined that it did not create an ideal situation for the city. The purposes of taking on the responsibility of acquiring land, building homes, or at least managing and overseeing the construction of homes. The city is simply not in the business of home building or construction management. So finally, here we are today. We are putting our best forward with what we strongly believe is a carefully thought out affordable housing program that has the best chance of success. Our application aside, the eight units for moderate income households further supplies schools and increasing much-needed affordable housing by, one, providing immediately available affordable housing for qualified families. That means that the homes are already in the ground and ready to start living. These families do not need to wait until the desired land for an affordable housing project identified or acquired. All the necessary financing is put in place. All the necessary entitlement and approval are obtained. The necessary bidding for materials and labor is done. The contracting for the work has been completed, and the actual construction of the homes has been completed. This is a process we know based on experience takes more than a year to complete, and often times will take two to three years for homes to be ready, even ready. Two, and as discussed in the staff report, financial viability for the affordable housing program broadens the pool of buyers to include moderate income households who can afford to service their home loans, along with paying for the home's basic upkeep, including chowai fees, property taxes, utilities, maintenance, and other expenses. And three, satisfying certain city's share of affordable housing identified in the state's regional need allocation arena. In this case, we would be satisfying eight of the 12 moderate income households identified under arena. To clarify, the project proposes to expand the group of potential buyers to include moderate income households, but it does not preclude extremely low income, low income, or low income households from the affordable units, provided they are a qualified household. And because the applicant has its own in-house mortgage company, DHI Mortgage, the applicant would actually be doing heavy lifting by qualifying the families that would purchase the affordable units. Once the families are qualified, the applicant would then send to the city essentially a list of qualified households that are eligible to apply to purchase the affordable homes. The applicant has also offered an additional $100,000, and that's in addition to the $300,000 we are already committed to the development agreement to the city. And those funds are intended to be used by an outside consultant, Mr. Michael Baker, to assist the city to help the procedures and criteria for reviewing and approving the applications by the qualified households. This was a suggestion, and we think that this was a reasonable request. Since we're including moderate income households in the pool of potential buyers, staff suggested increasing the number of affordable units originally identified for this project from eight to eight units, and we agreed. I presume that the applicant is a party benefiting from the change from six affordable units because of the higher affordable sales price that can be paid by moderate households, but that perception might overlook the real actual community benefit of adding two more affordable homes available to the city beyond the six that were already taken. Because of the quality amenities and school district that this city offers, those great attributes have put homes here in high demand, and the opportunity to find and own a quality-built home that is affordable is essentially nonexistent. Making those opportunities for homeownership available is a significant community benefit. We will be working with staff to give priority for these affordable homes to members of the military and current residents and workers in the city to the extent by law. What greater way or way do we show our gratitude to men and women who serve and defend our country but afford them the opportunity to own a newly constructed home and to live in this wonderful city? What greater way to show our appreciation for the men, women, and public citizens in the city to make it a real and viable option to actually lay work? With all that said, we hope you, why we're excited to be presenting this project to you for your consideration and approval tonight. I, along with Kelty Cole, the city manager for our Los Angeles, and Nick Bureau, our project manager, are available for any questions the council may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
I got a couple questions.
Wait, hold on. A public comment, and then close the hearing?
Okay, the hearing is now open for public input. Before spoke, actually. So, are there any public comments at this time?
Yes.
Yes, please, thank you.
Hello. My name is Erica Barodi. I'm listening to my voice. My name is Erica Barodi. First, I'd like to tell you a little bit about myself, as I feel I am representative of El Segundo residents who would benefit and qualify for this program, to hopefully dispel some myths about people in need of low and moderate income housing. I have lived in El Segundo for nine years. I have two children who attend Center Street School. My family is vested in the El Segundo community. It is the only home my children have access to. After we moved to El Segundo, our family dynamic and financial situation changed. While rents and home prices have exponentially increased, wages have not. Renters comprise almost 60% of El Segundo residents, and there's an entire shortage of renters who live in constant fear that our landlords will raise our rent and sell their property, and we will not be able to live in our hometown. Rents rise and wages stagnate is imperative to recognize the effects on El Segundo households and El Segundo children. Rents are so high that residents pay 50% of their income for housing. We have no ability to save. We become the working poor. We make too much money to apply for government assistance, and we make too little to ever hope to save for purchase for a home. We have a paycheck to pay paycheck, and there's a danger for financial error. An illness, a divorce, a loss of job can be catastrophic. It's a frightening way to live. More affordable housing units were available to low and moderate-income residents to purchase, it would change our lives. We could invest in us and our future, our community, and our children through homeownership, which will allow us to build equity, save for our kids' college education, maybe for ourselves to someday retire. I've heard my neighbors say that if El Segundo is too expensive, we should move. There is nowhere within an hour of El Segundo that substantial expense in the cost of housing. Our families are here, the sports system is here, our home is here. We are productive, contributing members of the community. I've also heard my neighbors say that if I cannot afford to live in El Segundo, I should work harder or get a better job. I commute 15 a week to work a full-time job of at least 40 a week. I'm still low to moderate income. After my full-time job, I take freelance assignments I can find, and after that, I volunteer for local sports organizations. I am still low to moderate income. Two bachelor's degrees, master's degree, I am still low to moderate income. And I receive no government benefits and subsidies. I have no debt. I have excellent credit. I'm still low to moderate income. Designated, city-mandated, affordable housing is the only way I ever hoped to afford to buy a home. I love El Segundo because of the people who live here. At Burt Field, I sit with my friends, attorneys and firefighters, doctors, engineers, artists, professors, teachers, rocket scientists, and musicians. Over a century ago, Supreme Court Justice Oliver Wendell Holmes first looked at the marketplace of ideas, a theory that the diverse and many voices that contribute to communities fosters competition and innovation, and these are the hallmarks of a vibrant, dynamic community. Socioeconomic diversity has the same effect. It is what makes our city different, and it is what makes our city rich. Our value to the community and each other is not intrinsically linked to our income bracket and net worth. I'm asking the city council to recognize the valuable contribution that our low and moderate-income neighbors make to our community by approving this measure. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barodi. Okay, I have a motion to close the public hearing.
We'll move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five-oh. Counsel discussion.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely, you can ask questions.
I just had a question for the developer. I believe it's a question for the developer. Can you give us a price range as to what an affordable unit is comprised and what it would sell for? Is it a two-bedroom, tell us a three-bedroom house?
Affordable units that we've currently designated are two-bedroom townhomes. The price of affordable sales of these homes will really depend on the size of the qualifying household. So, the smaller the household, the less effective affordable sales price you can set, and as it grows larger, you can have a higher sales price. So, the range right now, when we're looking extremely low to moderate income, is anywhere from zero for the extremely low, very low.
Let's talk for moderate level. So, if what your applicant has approved tonight, what are we talking, that bottom-barrel sale price is for moderate income?
For moderate income, I would, it's about anywhere between 550 and 600. We haven't done a -- this was done by Michael Baker, I think, in the last analysis, but it was based on a three-bedroom count.
Just to elaborate on that question, it's basically a function of their qualifying income and what's allowable mortgage payment threshold, 30%, 35%?
So...
It's 30%. There are three variables that we don't know at this point. One, the income limits are going to change probably this month, and so we'll have new numbers soon. The other is the household size, as she indicated the factor, and the other is how much income they actually make as opposed to what the limit limited. So, those three together, that's how they come up with this price.
Okay. I get an idea, wanted the public to know what it looked like, price, and this 550 to 600, this is something that the units for sale for now in El Segundo. So, that, I guess, misconception that some resident, current homeowner is that, oh, you're giving these away. Well, we're not. We're saying you're potentially selling them for the same price something sells for on Main Street or 770 West Imperial.
I do, you know, when we're looking at the market rate, sales price for these units...
Well, not particular units, but just a unit in El Segundo. It's not someone's hitting a lottery and you're selling it to them for $100,000.
Correct.
Although, in the previous iteration, it was, if you look at extremely low, to your point, it was zero.
Zero.
It was for the low designations, yes.
So, that's where it causes me a little bit of pause. I love what we're working to achieve by getting two more families into whatever fine moderate income to 77,000 to 116,000, depending on how many people you have in your family. I struggle a little bit with six units, zero sales price to D.R. Horton, eight units at 550, 600 now in the current state and potential gain there, so...
Yeah. Like, how did we come up with the number eight? Where did we, why was it in the number 10? Like, how did we come up with that number?
It was from a discussion that we had with Mr. Bureau, and we recognized it as an improvement, and so it's something we would take to this body to make the decision on.
Yeah, but to Ms. Barodi's point, how much money net is that value and much gain, like, by doing this conversion? Well, it should be a net neutral for D.R. Horton. Is that net going to be nine units, 10 units? I'm just trying to figure out the methodology that we came up, was just eight, or there's some methodology?
Eight was just a step in the right direction to get us to this point.
So, there's no structure behind it?
There isn't, because there's too many unknown variables.
But could we plug in some mathematical equation to come up with the number?
I think that that would be an appropriate question as to the applicant.
I think that's what we need to do.
Yeah, to me, I mean that we have a challenge ahead of us, as you pointed out, so eloquently the challenge becomes in the future, how do we, I mean, we're talking about eight families out of how many in El Segundo?
15,000.
Well, I don't know, 5,000 families in El Segundo. So, we're just scratching at the surface, so if we want to do something meaningful, I feel like we should, point, allocate even more units or get asked for some funds from what you could consider a surplus profit potential to go towards housing specifically in the future. No one's going to have this ongoing issue in that there continues to be legislation to fight this housing issue, this real challenge is not going away any... So, those are my thoughts. Open it up to anyone else.
I mean, I think there's more that needs to be presented to us based upon the staff report. It says that planning commission wanted for military, El Segundo residents. No, no, but it states in the staff report that within as much as legal as permissible law, and it says that a suggestion will be provided and recommendation to us in the meeting.
Yes, I'm sorry. It is okay to refer in military, but under the federal housing laws to give preference to residents, that's not allowable. That doesn't mean that there can't be an outreach to residents, try to get an awareness so that they apply, but they can be given priority just because they're residents. And the same really with the workforce. You know, the city wants to put the message out to all the employers in the city that this housing is available, the application, you know, what it will be and those kind of things. We put out that kind of information, but that's not a criteria that they use to make that determination.
Do you have your experience in regards to how often situations like this, people try to game the system?
Unfortunately, yes, I do.
Please share.
I have had experience. In fact, the Assistant City Attorney and I, a couple of years ago, were in some pretty massive litigation of affordable housing complex where the owner was selling allegedly above the allowable pricing price for the income categories that they were assigned for the unit. There were tenants that allegedly had other properties they owned, using these as second dwelling units. It was not what the state had intended when these laws were set forth, and it was quite work by the city to straighten it, and we did straighten it out to a large part, but not, some of it was just, it was a different city. We're not talking about El Segundo. You're asking me what my experience is. We had low-income properties, moderate-income properties in El Segundo before. I work in other cities. I've had other cities where I've seen fraud, turn things over to federal agencies, state agencies to prosecute people for housing fraud on a number of occasions. Yeah, there are people that game the system.
Do you know on, I don't know the exact numbers here, but on average, how many applications are typically received when housing like this becomes available? Hundreds, thousands, hundreds of thousands?
That I don't know the answer to. And I will say this, when you're dealing with, like HUD-type housing where, and that's usually rental-based, there is, there are more applicants, there is housing that's available. Now, the moderate range, I don't think there'll be such a flood of applicants as you would if the low and very low, but I think they have more of an answer to it than I do.
Yeah, the answer is hundreds, and D.R. Horton, as I said, is going to go through and first pass, and then they'll send some number of us. So, they're going to sort through that initial submission, but I'm going to guess we'll probably look at a few hundred to then go through and make decisions on.
Probabilities are still strong if we get the word out to the El Segundo moderate families for their, the probabilities of them actually winning this lottery.
Yeah, because you still have to qualify. So, you're going to get an onslaught of applications, but you still have to go through the qualification process, right? So, you're leading them through. But yeah, it'll be a lot.
I'm going.
Can I answer one real quick? On the military, I love the military incentive, can figure that out. The challenge is having served in military, like, every four years or less, you're gone. And I know there's a mechanism in place where we thought about the sale and what you do with the profits and pro-rata, would just be the only thing I'd be concerned about is that they're not here for very long. So, I don't know if we have a solution yet, or we've thought through that.
I worked in a community that had a naval base and other air force and had affordable housing programs, and that was that people would get reassigned and with very little notice, and they had, they were a participant in the program, and we did our best to work with those individuals to try to help them make that transition, but yes, that is...
So, would military have preference? If I'm an El Segundo resident, well, we can't give them preference, but I'm an active-duty military, I'm right here at L.A. Air Force Base. They somehow, we get preference, a higher weighting, like, are we discriminating?
I think the council would give that question in...
Winning the lottery?
I'm sorry? Oh, move them up on the list, and for application period, you move them up on the list, and the council would need, though, to include that as part of the conditions of approval here, they would get priority.
But let me understand the process. You can paint the picture. Is this like a bingo, like, we're rolling around balls in a bingo thing, and then, hey, for 37, you get this unit? Because you're saying move them up the list, but this is the most qualified, moderate-income, top-six buyers are getting these six units. I mean, this is a lottery, not?
I don't answer to that question. I don't think we've talked about that. My envision, and you guys can chime in, is you have a period where you open them up, and you take whatever's going to come in, and then you sort through. Once you've sorted through, you pre-qualify however many there are going to be, then those orders, you know, military priority, and prioritize them that way. Again, even the number that we're left with, you still have to qualify. So, you may get to a point where, you know, they're not qualifying, you're going to be the next person on the list. So, we still probably need to work out some of those details with direction from council and with the city's guidance on what we can legally do in that regard.
End up with 30 qualified buyers?
Yes.
And six units?
Yeah.
Eight. Well, we don't know what we have yet. But no, but, so, we have more qualified applicants than we have units. It's, I mean, you know how it went with us trying to figure out who was going to swim in the pool? So, we're not deciding who gets these units, correct? I just want to make sure that this is clear. This is, I mean, this is, we, this body is not choosing who gets these units.
Right. That's correct.
And it's, I guess, to the point, when we're talking about, well, it could be somebody could vary based upon the qualification, but it sounds, and it's like, most qualified people will get it, but doesn't that, isn't that counterintuitive to what we're trying to do? I mean, if you qualify and you're in that margin, you check all those boxes, your name should be thrown in a hat, and six get pulled out of a hat, and if you're the lucky winner, you're the winner. And if we want to give military preference, well, maybe the families get two tickets in the hat.
Maybe they get two tickets in the hat, yeah. I mean, those decisions can be made, and if that's the guidance that you're giving, we certainly do that.
Has to be some legal precedent to this, is there not?
If we're going to, I mean, there are ways to do this potentially, and we haven't, at least I've not been in a discussion exactly how that's going to be done, but yes, if there's an application period and there's so many people that qualify, and if there isn't criteria that can really, military may be one of the criteria where the number of names in the hat may be much smaller, but it may well end up being a lottery-type system that you're describing, because just so that you're not giving preference based upon some criteria that would be illegal. As we talk through this and we work through this, we're going to want to make sure that we do it in a legal way so that we're not giving favors to anyone. Again, except for the military, which...
There's a document that needs to come back to council, it's called the Affordable Housing Act, and as part of that discussion, I think is really, you know, between D.R. Horton, is, you know, the process of getting new buyers in, it really hasn't been discussed in detail. But when they started looking at extremely low and low, they found these issues. So, you know, tonight, we wanted to discuss change requirements from where it is today, change it over to moderate, and if council gives us that direction, we will... So, you know, tonight, we wanted to discuss change requirements from where it is today, change it over to moderate, and if council gives us that direction, we will, we will have more detailed discussions with, with the D.R. Horton, and I can consult and come to you with the actual process.
So, I mean, Scott's point of, I'm just kind of a little puzzled. We knew we were going to have to do some affordable housing, so I'm just surprised that the parameters and the guidance of how we were going to determine that weren't predetermined now that the buildings are almost finished. I mean, we've been building these for many years, and we're now just figuring out how to pick the, I'm just, I'm just puzzled that why this isn't predetermined and preset, because we knew we were going to do it regardless of the level, we were going to do, come up with some type of process. Weren't the parameters already be determined and set? I'm kind of puzzled.
Let's hear from David, I know he's chopping on the bit.
Well, I was going to say that in my experience in doing this previously, the public agencies I've represented didn't actually select, to extent, unless they were type, which is rental, they weren't, they weren't the ones qualifying, selecting tenants or the buyers, that those were brought to the city just to verify that, in fact, they qualify. It was property owner that was actually bringing the information for the city. The city wasn't selecting who was going to go there.
And that's, that's the way, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so that's what we've set it up right now. So D.R. Horton would, would receive the applications, evaluate them, and then we, the city, would only verify the list that they gave us for the qualified households, and we make the determination whether they do in fact qualify or not. So D.R. Horton is responsible, not the city.
So maybe D.R. Horton explained to us the process that they're going to determine it, so our residents.
Because to Drew's point, if the six units that sold, get sold to the highest probable qualifying families, then.
Highest qualified. Yeah, if there are people who are qualified at the very low-income bracket, but the only people we pick out are people in the moderate bracket because they have a higher price, I don't think that's the intent of the program. I think to Carol, in terms of the remarkable twist to this, is that our, the school district's property to do this, that we're going to have affordable and low-affordable housing, and that was something that clearly appealed to the populace of El Segundo when they embarked on this, and then to suddenly say, oh, wait, turns out that wasn't a viable program at all, we need to, we need to set a higher price. I mean, the stink bomb is redolent with that, right? That it certainly doesn't feel good to have that. Now, I am very empathetic to the idea that we are allowing room for more families and more with it, but it certainly doesn't feel like the intent of the program. Devil's advocate on the military piece, because of the financial upside and seemingly a three appreciation of property value, I don't think that we intended this to be a hundred-dollar windfall to Senior Airman Schmuckatelli. And God bless him, love him to pieces, and I know he would be elated to flip this property in three, but I don't think that is what we are necessarily looking for. The idea of this is to provide access and affordability and entrance to the sort of families that we saw Erica speak to earlier in here. Now, I think that as we move forward, we should bear those things in mind about what the financial is to D.R., if we move this through, and what the correlative process is to select people. It's important to decide, is this, I mean, we are holding a really difficult item here for a city, to be have, having affordable housing for purchase is a really difficult thing to work through, and it presents this whole lot of really bad choices. The skip, this of the El Segundo Police Department is somehow going to be a code enforcement agency, as if, as if we had a giant HUD brand on, is really difficult. So knowing what their process is for who these people are going to say is qualified, how they're going to select them, and then deciding on what our process is for verification of these people, so it doesn't, doesn't turn to scam, doesn't leave us holding the bag when someone not qualified, we thought that they're sitting there letting the process, or somehow they foreclose on it, and we got our office sitting there trying to move people's furniture to the curb. This is a really difficult thing, so I think we should be here at year six with a little bit more of, more of a definition of what we're going into.
Would we beholden entirely to for sale as to rental units? I know there's an administration component to that, but I understand it's one giant parcel in consistency, but are there reasons to sell them as opposed to require leasing?
Well, originally, back in whenever it was, 2011, you know, option two identified the twenty homes and thirty-four multifamily, there was an option of going condo or apartment. At that time, there was an option. D.R. Horton has chose to, to condo, condominiumize the multifamily. I think you're referring to the affordable housing units of the eight-unit unit. If those are to be rentals and not owned, then I guess the question is, who's going to own them to rent? And are you proposing that maybe city is the owners of the property rented?
I haven't really thought far ahead, but it feels like we're somewhat stuck on the purchase component, the HOA component, whether or not they get there, they can afford a property tax. HOA, we put a low-income person in there, what I hear staff saying is not be able to afford it, and they end up subletting it or something else. No?
Well, they're not going to be really allowed to do those things, but.
Well, sure. Enforcement's a whole, I think, yeah.
No, I was going to say that there's in the sale documents that prohibit leasing for any period.
I understand covenants and all that, but I'm just saying, reality, someone can't make their, they're going to do whatever they have to do to make it work, air be a room, whatever.
I don't believe there's any way that we can ensure that there won't be some violation of the agreements or some fraud in the process. We will do our best, but it happens.
I've built into, into the covenant and everything is an annual review, which is part of when the D.R. Horton can kick in, is paying. And so we're going back through verifying income, verifying who's there, everything every year that has to occur.
Is there an idea thrown out at one point to take any sweat money and, you know, buy another apartment building and provide people elsewhere? I just, we're making this, feels like we're making this overly complicated. Also think that, what's the square footage of these units? Sixteen hundred?
Seventeen, eighteen.
Hundred? Oh, twelve, okay. So not excessive, but if low to moderate income, I mean, shoot, when I was at school as a single dad, I lived in a seven-hundred-square-foot apartment. I just, why are we overcomplicating the process? I just feel like it, there could be an easier solution out there.
Well, one of the things that was talked about, and I don't know that it's easier, is that money could be, we could require, if D.R. Horton would do, purchase an apartment building and non-property housing company come in and operate that. That is done, that is done by a lot of cities.
Could actually expand the senior housing?
For, so long as it, again, meets those affordable, not just, it also, it needs to be affordable.
So, with Park Vista?
What would a, Mark, or Mark, Scott, you're in real estate, what's a, one of those buildings that appear, like an eight-unit, don't they have like eight-unit apartments? What do those go for?
Like two, five. No, they're four units, none of them, none of them are.
Oh, yeah, but still eight total units? Oh, five million.
Yeah, they're only four-unit apartment buildings. Eight units would be high-density. Careful. Sorry. I think there's a feel-good story here. I think what we're concerned is, sorry.
Well, no, I don't know if I have permission to add to this conversation.
Can she come up to the mic? True, it's up to you.
Mrs. Barret, please.
Thank you.
In charge.
So when you guys are talking about the home ownership aspect back out of it, to get it back into rental units, I mean, that's kind of perpetuating a problem that already exists, is that people like me, invested in the community with our volunteerism, our tax dollars, our, we spent all of our disposable incomes here, we are super invested in this community, but when you have an entire section of renters don't have any opportunity ever to buy anything, and we just are perpetuating this cycle, and to give them eight units, whoever they, whether it's me or not me, or a veteran, that's, that's really, that's really the city showing, we appreciate, we appreciate your contribution, and we want you to be fully invested members of this community. And to dismiss that as it's not convenient, or it's too complicated, and why can't we just have more rentals? Again, that's the only way that's in my income bracket. I, I am of income and moderate income. I think my income was around seven thousand dollars last year, and so, you know, I miss that income bracket, and it's important, there's no other way for people, especially in this area, to save or acquire, accumulate wealth. And so you have a whole generation of people who are struggling in this, and to this entity, to keep these people here, and not to keep like string, because it just, it's unnecessary, especially when you have a company who is, you know, kind of saying like, hey, let's work something out for long-term benefits for our residents, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's what I was saying. You had a question?
No, just, it's more of a statement. I mean, reality before us is there are very limited opportunities. This is, this is first residential development of its kind. Years? Twenty? So we have very limited opportunities to build any increased housing, let, affordable housing. So while it's great, we're going to be able to provide six for eight, this is certainly a sustainable model going forward, ten, whatever it is. About five thousand families in town. I mean, it's not even in the bucket, let's be honest. So I think we weigh this, this decision very carefully. I, I don't know, personally, I feel like I would like to see staff work a little bit further on this. I don't feel like it's quite baked to the extent that it could be. That's my personal preference. I'd love to hear from the council on it. Dr. Brand, please.
Also have a statement. This has been going on for a long time. Two thousand and twelve, I heard mentioned, that was the year I exited the council at the end of my first term. I'd like to thank everybody for the energy and expertise they've put into this to try to solve it. Personally, I'm fed up with the state meddling in local affairs. We saw it recently with how we get our trade picked up, now we're seeing it around housing, and it goes on, and local control is jeopardized by the state getting into our ballpark. I accept a staff recommendation, by all time you talked about it, on it, and I understand some of your reason behind it, I think we're going to meet the totals that the state expects us to, whether we do this deal or we don't, we're not going to get there. I think our Horton had the right thoughts on second, and that's the in-lu fees. It was more than three, three million dollars that we could have allocated, or we could allocate, to fixing up all the things that are a problem with Vista, where we could serve a whole lot more people than families. I don't know how many people are over there, but it's, it's many dozen. And so I really think the in-lu fee is the option and the one that I support. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brand. Any thoughts on how you would like to proceed? Scott, sorry, you've spoken too much already. Just kidding, no, I'm kidding.
I'm gonna, would like staff to go back and sharpen the pencil and figure out if there's a, another, and really some mathematical algorithm to determine what the right number is.
I had lots of thoughts coming to tonight. One started with the thought of, hey, the developers can stand and make some extra money with, with the toys, what kind of community benefit could be there for us with that? Months ago, I sat where Dawn sits now and felt that the in-lu fee was the right way to go. But as I spoke to the community, I realized that there's a, there's a large contingent in our community that feels like I would rather have a chance at winning a lottery ticket than no chance. And, and so I, that in line, sorry, Dawn, I'm not going to agree with you on that one. I try, you know, I try. But what I started to say earlier, I think there's a feel-good story here. I think it's very, very important for us at the DIAS and staff to make sure that we paint a very clear picture to the residents of El Segundo that have their eyes set on the opportunity to invest in their community, and we paint that picture and make it very still clear as to what it means to, one, apply, two, qualify, and three, how it's going to be chosen, how these six owners will be chosen, or eight, or ten, whatever number Carol keeps throwing out there. But that's the very important piece, because when it's all set in twenty years, these, however many units, Carol, are going to drop out of our housing element. Because in twenty, when they're no longer low-income, that island second goes away, whoever owns it just owns it, and can sell it what they want, and all of a sudden, boom, they, that's when the law cashes in after twenty years, is my understanding of this process. Yes?
And that's, that's the minimum period, that's the period by state law, and you're correct, but the way Sacramento is approaching this problem, I don't know that it makes sense, but there are outside terms on the different affordable housing that is available to be built, and so they just shoot in terms, which does beg the question, in twenty years from now, these go away, do you have to replace them? I mean, you know, it's.
So, so my thought is, let's iron out the details, tell us the lottery, it's going to work, who it potentially will benefit, and how many units there are. And I think we tell staff moving forward, let's stop recommending developers to create for-sale affordable housing units, because they are not the answer. For rent affordable housing units will be the answer long-term, so they always stay part of our housing element, so each year we can count them as part of our housing element, and we don't lose them. That's, I, I think we, we fumbled this one years ago, and I do not know if there's a way to unfumble it, so I think that, that's my recommendation.
Scott, can I throw this out there, that I think that there's a little inside baseball you're talking, talking about that I think maybe the public doesn't get, as far as state mandates for affordability, and you were just saying that those these things after twenty years, no longer are covered by a covenant, it's going to be affordable housing, we no longer are credited with having them. And so that's the argument that's been here, I think there's probably people in the public who don't understand that finite piece, and the idea with a rental unit is that continues as affordability for the city.
Yes.
Currently, the state, the state's focus is not on the past. What they do is they have, they put out every seven years? And they give these goals every, on a go-forward basis. For the next seven years, you will plan to build X number of moderate, low, low, extreme low, and you have to come up and plan to do that. They don't look back, you have, they look forward to wanting more. And so that, now that doesn't mean it won't change in the future, but that's been the model for more than twenty years, it's really, it's really in the last decade where that's really, there's starting to be some, some compliance and to that, but they don't currently look back or really count what you have. It's what we're going to be required to do in the future.
Well, half, because there's only so much land.
I'm not going to disagree with you, Sacramento should do and what they do do, I don't understand.
Do we have consensus on directing staff to go and take at the numbers and the model for the lottery on a go-forward basis? Do we have consensus before I hear from applicant again?
Yes.
Yes, okay, would you like to approach the mic again?
We understand the concerns, the council, in particular, the issue regarding, it's really just a small pool of people that get to benefit from this program. Whatever you mentioned, six to ten families, and there's five thousand families in the city of El Segundo. Offering to do is provide immediate housing for families that. Offering to do is provide immediate housing for families that otherwise couldn't afford to own and live in this city. Um, it's something that's not possible if the city is looking at in lieu fees to possibly finance, uh, for rent, affordable housing. When we sat down, city staff, and mind you, we have spent a year and a half mired in this whole process trying to figure out the right solution. We took a look at the city, the city map, and it's completely strained. There's very few land opportunities are, it's extremely expensive. So the fee just itself will get into barely covering a portion of that acquisition cost. And as you mentioned, if you're looking at a four-unit apartment that you want to take, rehabilitate to make it affordable, I'd like to think that the city would want to use the funds to somewhat upgrade the, and make them nice units to live in. They're not leaving themselves much money to go ahead and do that sort of renovation, rehabilitation work. Um, and your, the pool of families actually benefit for those four units or eight units, it's.
I would counter that. I would counter that by saying if you already offered three million in lieu fees and you're going to stand to gain townhomes going, million and two? Let me finish, please, please. Times eight, let's just round that up to nine million bucks. The delta there, well, that maybe could be, could be related to this additional housing. So I would just suggest at this point, we already have consensus that we direct staff to board with getting back with D.R. Horton, revisiting this and coming back with something more specific. And I want to thank D.R. Horton for being, being good for as you guys put this towards Little League and several other things. Aquatics, thank you very much, and a bunch of other things along the way. So appreciate that. It's not unnoticed.
I would recommend that since it's been the planning commission and it's public, or notice for this public hearing that you continue to, and given the direction, I'm thinking three meetings from now, is that?
Second meeting.
So first meeting in June, is that? So council would move to have this hearing continue to the first meeting.
Oh yeah, would you like to? Yeah, could you say your, please, thanks.
Yeah, Kelty Cole, uh, D.R. Horton, city manager. To record, uh, to clarify a comment regarding, um, the affordability possibly being in this five to $500,000 range and there being comparable units on main street, we're not giving these away. Five thousand live in El Segundo, there's three units for sale now, built in the 1970s, carports, uh, laundry room facilities in the unit that are for sale, two or two are contingent. So, um, what this affordable housing program is for moderate families is gives them a right, uh, to apply and to be, um, sorry, uh, you know, to be based on their income level rather than compete with investors who could pick up a unit for 500,000, who have cash that is attractive to somebody who just wants to sell their unit. That also is competing with pocket listings, off-market deals, realtors who are realtor friends. So this program is have six to eight units available for people need affordable housing. Those applications are all analyzed based on their same merits and then go into a lottery program. I think that's important to know and understand because being a buyer and coming in with your financials, maybe having a little less on a score or going with a little bit, uh, more aggressive loan program just to get you into the door is, is buyer to get turned down when they're trying to bid for a property, then there's only three of them available in the city and it might be a cash buyer is going to turn that into a rental or a VBR O. So just for the record, wanted to clarify that for all, for all the sins that this is for everybody. Uh, there's no secret, there's no off-market deal, we're looking at these applications all the same, okay?
Thank you, Ms. Cole. Appreciate that. Okay.
The applicant would like to, um, schedule the next week for the second meeting in May.
Do you, you have enough time?
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay.
So what they.
You look dubious.
No, I'm just thinking that that means that this all has to be worked out essentially in like two weeks. That seems excessive to me. No, I'm not saying it's comfortable doing that, I just think that.
Maybe we try it. And then if we accommodate, we push it one week.
Madam Clerk, if you would, please, we're, I'm with the script here.
You're off the script now.
We're continuing the public hearing until the next May. Is that correct?
Tell me, 21st.
Need a motion for that?
Yes. And if it doesn't, if it's not ready by then, we'll, we'll notice it to continue it again.
Okay.
So moved.
All right, I'll second that, all, all for?
Aye.
Aye. No.
Okay, four one. They do. We are going to, well, we're going to pull up, we're going to push one item till later, but before we do, let's go to consent agenda. Do we have any polls?
Yes.
Guess which ones, Scott?
Uh, I believe it's seventeen, the park.
No, the park's not in the consent.
You can pull it, um.
That's eighteen, but yeah.
Sorry.
You're still missing special and regular city council meetings of March nineteenth. The council works off pulling those till next meeting. The special and regular city council.
That's consent, isn't it?
Yeah, didn't you just say consent?
No, I was just looking at polls.
That's it, I'm pulling those minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Pulling items. Thank you, okay.
Not of, um, just the March nineteenth minutes. You also have March fifth on, on there.
Okay.
So you can vote for those or approve those, but not the nineteenth.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any polls?
Thirteen?
I thought we can.
I anticipated that one.
I don't think there's any mystery to that.
Any others, Dawn? Any polls? Scott? You got it? Carol? No, okay. Do I have a motion to approve item two, part three, which only includes March fifth, the March fifth meetings and the special meeting? Item four, five, six, seven, nine, 10, 11, 12, 14, 15, 16, and seen?
So.
I'm second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Five oh. Okay, Tracy, item three.
Just pulling the, um, it's from March nineteenth.
Just a correction or?
Yeah, we're just pulling, they'll be on meeting.
Great, thank you. Item 18, Councilman Pimentel. Need to read it, I know you're in some pain. Consideration impossible action authorized a police department to repurpose five 2013 Honda ST 1300P motorcycles which are due for replacement, purchasing five new 2019 BMW R1250P motorcycles under an existing contract for BMW. The city's purchase would piggyback on an existing city, number 27170327. Authorizes the city manager or attorney to repurpose, sell, or auction the department's used motorcycles, impact $150,195. Chris?
Yeah, the, I know we have Lou of the Chief, we're going to have, oh, you're getting, you're getting in the crosshairs, hairs again. Uh, I, I think that one thing that the public needs to see or hear out is that if we're buying BMW replacements, buying BMW motorcycles replacements after we scrapped BMWs 10 years ago and comparable motorcycles, uh, seem to be on the market for somewhat less, just provide our justification, our reasoning and why those were selected at $30,000 a, is something that I think that, that I certainly would be open to, and I think the public would as well.
Sure. We had BMWs back in 2004 and again in 2007. Um, after we transitioned from the Kawasaki, it was the best motorcycle in the market. Went into some financial issues, we looked for ways to save money. We did it at the Honda and we selected the Honda, but problems, everything that's on the Honda is aftermarket. It's, it doesn't fully integrate with anything. And so we run into battery problems, we run into kinds of other issues. It's a good bike and it's a good street bike, but not the best police enforcement bike. We knew was far superior. They're constantly upgrading safety, uh, gears. Honda hasn't changed their motorcycle in seven years. They haven't done any upgrades as opposed to what BMW has done.
What other models did we look at when we chose the BMW?
Looked at the BMW, the Honda, and at the time was Davidson was getting back into the mix and no one wanted to ride a Harley Davidson because you have a fire suit to ride around in it.
I know the LAPD went with battery-operated bicycles to, to those, I mean, I realize it's not a one-for-one because those are not a street bike. Look at any of those comparables?
Um, no, sir.
I just learned LA, LA County Fire or City, which, but they have actual first responders on bikes now too, in, in areas, bicycles.
We'll take those two.
Well, I think the question, because the bikes are, these motorcycles are substantially more expensive in the market, understand reliability concerns around whether Buell or, or Harley, those things. But I think that, that, I mean, it is a significant investment, but comes from asset forfeiture and equipment replacement, but 150,000 for five motorcycles. Uh, and to your point, the Hondas, and I realize that cycle for replacement of motorcycles is much shorter than our other equipment, but you know, you can, typically you can ride a Honda for about 30 years and, and it's not expensive to fix. Uh, but I know in here it cites some particular maintenance issues. Would you mind elucidating, illuminating some of those for those watching?
Sure, we have to remember that a street Honda and a police Honda, two different things, just like comparing a canine, police canine with a pet. These bikes are ridden hard, fast acceleration, we're dropping them constantly, continually training, and these things are ridden very hard. And so I might go 30,000 miles on a Honda for my own personal bike and maybe change the clutch. We go through clutches at least two or three times, along with brakes, along with tires. So these bikes are really ridden very hard throughout the year. And, uh, as far as the, the, the costs, some of the things, we got some significant, what I'd like to say, uh, safety features the BMW has, like example, cornering ABS, which is state-of-the-art. Uh, right now, if I get on a bike and I try to corner and, and stop, or hit the brakes while I'm in a, a tight turn, the bike's going to go down. And so BMW has a new technology that allows the rider to actually brake hard, a full brake in a 40 degree turn, which is unheard of, where typically to stand the bike up, hit the brakes. And if anyone has ridden a motorcycle before, um, myself included, I've been to motor school, I've been riding, riding motorcycle for a long time, um, this is pretty significant in its own. Besides the things that are, that are part of the motorcycle integrated, as far as the lighting that goes, um, right now we're trying to, especially dual, dual batteries as well, that's a big. When we got involved in the Honda, we knew we were going to have a battery because it's a single battery. And sure enough, the bike stops someone, if we don't turn that motorcycle off, I'm sorry, if we don't keep the motorcycle running, the lights are going to die. And if you're there for 10 more minutes, 10 or minutes or longer, the bike, the light will be out. And, uh, if we leave it running, we're heat. And so BMW, now we have dual batteries, one controls the lights, one controls the actual engine. It allows us to do other things, like right now, we have new, for our units, we want to put these on the, and we can obtain that with the BMW. There's a lot of things that we can do with Honda. Yeah, it's a little more expensive, but it's worth the price.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think we doubt that it's actually a good bike. I, I would ask, are there other agencies around using them or have, when they've upgraded bikes, have they gone to different models?
Well, some do. I know on the beach, they went to more of an enduro bike. Um, the larger agencies, uh, LA sheriffs are going back to the BMW. LA County, I'm sorry, LAPD, they've got a mix match BMWs and Harleys. Uh, here at the airport, they're back to BMWs. Everyone's going to BMW because they've changed a lot of things. One is fuel, fuel's big. Most motorcycles operate in a 91 game. The new BMW runs on 87. Very minimal, um, performance changes. And so for us, I think that's a pretty significant savings. For us, it's $2 a gallon because we can pump it to the yard, use the bulk rate fuel, or before we had to go to Chevron, pay about a gallon.
I don't have any. I just have to ask, Lieutenant, um, is electric, I know there are plenty of electric motorcycles on the market, but for police and acceleration, don't have the gas emissions.
We really didn't look into it, I'm sure that we will in the future, because it's going to be the, and I don't know if we have the infrastructure for that right now.
Okay. Uh, all right. Any other questions? Did you have, no?
No, ready for a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to move approval of item 13, please.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, zero, thank you. And the, that was it, right?
Yep.
Item 17, consideration impossible to allocate pool space to South Bay United and Trojan youth water clubs at the city of El Segundo, Wiseburn Unified School District Athletic Center, 2240 East Grand Avenue, fiscal impact, and, and I see, yes, sir. Oh, sorry. Yeah, yeah, thank you. Let's do that. I, I, you asked me that, I apologize. We're going to go on to item 18. Okay, okay. Chris accused himself and that'll give him the ability to leave right after that item 17. So 18, consideration impossible action to approve the design concepts for Acacia Park and Washington Playground as presented by RHA Landscape Architects, planners, and recommended by the Recreation and Parks Commission, fiscal 950,000.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. I'm happy to be here to have a presentation on the final design concepts for Park and Washington Playground. Uh, you can see the boards behind me, visuals. Uh, we also will have the plans up in the presentation and I think, think we have handouts that you can have right in front of you if you need those also. Um, but we've been very closely with RHA Landscape Architects and planners since about November. Uh, we've hosted numerous community engagement meetings and fine-tuned these designs throughout that process based on the feedback back from the community. Uh, ultimately, uh, we sought recommendation from the Recreation and Parks Commission and that's what's in front of you tonight. I'm really pleased with the designs. I really think that, uh, I'm confident that, that improvements to the parks and the playgrounds will, will add value to these neighborhoods. Uh, the main consideration tonight with Acacia Park, uh, which we'll discuss in more detail later, uh, is a design that does remove the outdoor swimming pool and the supporting restroom facility. Um, that decision was based both on fact as well as trending low, low usage facility. Um, but before we get to that point, I'm going to introduce Doug Grove and Greg Meek from RHA Landscape Architects, and they were going to take you through the design process and the plans.
Great. Thank you, Meredith, uh, Mayor, council, staff, glad to be here tonight. It's been a very, uh, great process. I'm the president of RHA Landscape Architects in Riverside and Greg is responsible with us as well. Um, we've been doing parks for, for years, something we, we do, so we're really going to help the staff out and help the city with this, uh, park. Let's see, there we go. Um, as Meredith mentioned, um, the planning process we had started in November. Uh, we had a key stakeholder meeting, um, with just the residents that were, that were in the park, wanted to have it with just them so we could get their input, um, without the community, um, talking over them. So that was very important. We had another meeting then that same week at Jostens, the entire community, that, and it was advertised all over the city. Uh, we can't, we got their input at that meeting, just took ideas, didn't have any, have any ideas that we wanted to have there. They just, we wrote down ideas, um, then brought it back in January, had two concepts for each park, actually three concepts for each park, showed those to the residents, that they get a chance to vote on what they liked, tell us what they didn't like. Um, we then took those concepts back, worked with staff and, and our staff, and the final concept that we showed to the community in workshop February. And what you have tonight is that we then took comments from that meeting, uh, we find them once again, took Recreation and Parks Commission. As Meredith mentioned, Recreation and Parks Commission, we talked about the pool versus no pool and I'll show you here in a, um, so we are here tonight, a month later, so a quick process, uh, but really good public input, excited about what the residents shared with us, happy with, with the minds, um, and I know that they were too at the last meeting. Real quickly, Acacia Park, uh, prior to the demolition for the service station, uh, kind of doing construction there on the right in December. Pictures again. Uh, pictures again on the left, uh, what it was like before, the pool, the lift station that's gone in, obviously now it's all completed, there is some grass out there, timber, grass with tables, which the residents were very happy about. We're gonna get something, um, because construction of this park will probably be another eight months to four that can actually be, be finished, so, uh, it was get something out there in the room. Design point, um, Acacia Avenue on the bottom, at the, so you can see the emergency lift station there on the right. And then a series of wells and, uh, so forth that are, that sort of that there, along that section on the bottom there by the street. Nope, I will just. Um, the gray area you see on the perimeter, that's this concrete walkway. Uh, we do have a small three foot decorative fence along the front, that's primarily just to keep the kids from running in the street, uh, wasn't really meant for any of any types, there's no gates, it's just gonna be open to. And to keep the kids and balls and things from rolling out into the street, uh, it is pretty, pretty clear and it, and it gets somewhat busy. Uh, as you move up the left hand side, you'll see a, a small structure there, play area, uh, we, we call it two to five structure for kids two to five years old, anybody can play on it, but that, but that's the kind of design. If you look over on the left hand side, you'll see the little playhouse with the rest, it's kind of designed for the smaller kids, uh, smaller motorcycles, not quite as tall, uh, ability is a little bit less. We do have a picnic right below that, that kind of provides place for parents to sit, kind of put kids from running out the gate or the fence down to the bottom, bottom. Uh, there's a sand area in there, most of the surfacing will be either form place, uh, it's a, um, like a synthetic big turf, not like you see in the soccer field, but more of a play turf. So we'll look at the, and still be decided on as we move through the construction drawings. Uh, the trees there, you'll see they're kind of light color, those are existing trees, we did lose a tree recently, um, an existing magnolia where the, but it actually allowed us to get place for that playground, so we've actually lost a tree. As you move up the left hand side, you have some there under the trees, we have new trees going in, the green circles, the purple circles, and, and the reddish orange, those are all new trees that are going in. Uh, and then the, kind of the premier space for the park, the large playground with, you'll see the upper left hand picture there. They structure with slides, uh, big shade canopy over the top, um, and then, and then we'll call, it's called crab, it's a big netting structure. Um, you can, can see it better, and I'll show you just here in a second. Uh, really, really popular, the netting structures are really popular with kids, that residents loved them. When we took to our meeting, we had pictures of all different kinds of playground equipment, the netting structure as well as swings were the most popular elements in the, uh, presentation. As you move around there, you've got some, again, some existing trees there in the corner, you've got a little DG path with some more picnic tables in that area. You move down to the right side where the pool used to be, uh, is a large set, uh, six swings, um, and then a, the round thing there is, uh, it's called, it's like the closest thing we're gonna go around, do those anymore. But this actually is a merry-go-round, it's with the ground, you can see it on the left hand side, and I'm gonna probably jump here to the next picture, cause you'll be able to see. Anyway, here's the play structures you've got going, very large one there in the center for, that's kind of a five to twelve, as we call it, and that netting crab structure that's talked about there, this one. We've got stuff at ground level, uh, for disabled kids to also access the, the playground equipment, they can actually get that netting structure as well, very, very accessible. Over the left hand side there next to the swings is what I was talking about, that can be accessed by chairs, by any, any child, they can, you know, the teacups, the, the, and spin it around, thing rotates. And it's at ground level, so the kids, kids can't, that underneath it, writing, it's a, uh, really, it's a brand new piece that this manufacturer's putting out, really, I think it's gonna change. Get us back to those days of playing on a merry-go-round that's so dangerous that we couldn't do anymore. Do you want to talk, question, you may go through both parks first, or you wanted to ask questions about, about this first? We'll jump to, um, we also are gonna, gonna do, get into all the different, we are gonna do, uh, planting concepts where we've got different smells, tastes, um, you know, you know, it's real important. I mean, the playground stuff's fun, but it's fun to have other, the thing, bring butterflies and birds into the park, uh, caterpillars and things, and the kids can play, kids can learn about different plants. So that will be part of the area around the side of the playground and the park that they'll be able to use. Uh, Washington Park, uh, over by PCA, is the left hand picture there is kind of the whole park site from maple down to palm, uh, there on the right there is a zoom in, just playground equipment. I think that equipment's probably at least forty years, I haven't seen some of it old for a while. Um, the, the picture, DG walkway going in both sides, north and south, and very old play equipment, um, in there right now. Uh, the plan here is to basically leave shape the same, uh, and the concepts that we designed, we did some pretty wild, crazy designs, but very expensive. Uh, we wanted to explore that idea first, um, some of them were worth to eight hundred thousand dollars for a playground. Um, so we scaled back, uh, this one fits within the budget of two seventy, um, replacing the sand area with a, a play surface, or the turf, the, um, form place, uh, some couple of nice structures. Uh, DG walk around the outside, creating a sand area for the kids, really important, we find out a lot with our playgrounds, you, kids like to play in the sand. And so we can have small areas of sand they can do and do and play, a lot of times, kids play in the structures for a, an hour, and then they go play, play in the sand for three, so. Like to incorporate that as much as we can, and this is more of a nature theme, concept, you've got some, the blue is not real water, it's, uh, surfacing, but it's act as a stream with climbing. Be climbable, it'll meet all safety standards, uh, some benches along the top, uh, new tables, uh, bigger shade trees there coming in, and then some benches on the bottom. And then the eight, the path on the bottom, that goes south to the street, will be redone to be accessible, now it doesn't meet, uh, standards to get there, so we will, part of the as well. That is, the structures here, a different look here, um, budget's a little less, so we can't be quite as elaborate, so some very good play value in these structures, and we get shade, which is very important. Uh, getting a net structure in there again, that everybody really liked, getting our swings in, which is important. Uh, two to five structure on the right hand side, smaller, uh, smaller, five to twelve on the other side, along with the boulders and several boulders, like you see there, kind of scattered throughout, throughout the ground. That will allow kids to play, and some of those as well, to do a little bit of climbing. So I think, yep, so that is it, we will entertain questions from council.
I just have one question, on Washington Park, I know that, um, that field, field is used by soccer and volleyball, we're not limiting that with, with the, um, with the blue area, the end river bed?
Um, no, so the Washington playground, exactly the same exact footprint as it is today.
Okay, so we're not eating green there at all?
Questions or comments, I think, okay, great. What is the council on this? Yes, we have a decision to make, right?
Right, exactly. So what's recommended by the Recreation and Parks Commission are these, are these two designs? Again, the Acacia Park design, we did contemplate one design, very, very similar to this, that can pool, and, um, as indicated in your report, uh, about a million dollars over budget, um, to go that, that direction, just based on the motivation that the pool would need. Um, we would be required to demolish the existing restroom and add a, a, a new restroom, um, that would be to, um, building codes and state laws. And, um, just, uh, to improve the pool area, what would be recommended in terms of improvements would be shade, uh, on the pool decking and expanded pool decking area and a new wall. Um, so all of those things added up to, um, quite significant budgetary constraint, and that was primarily the commission's discussion, is of course, they would want to, you know, keep an amenity that, um, that is so, so many people in town. Um, but they felt that with the addition of the renovation of the plunge up ahead, um, fiscally responsible, uh, move forward would be to go with the one that was, to what's already been budgeted for.
Now, in addition, it's the staffing cost would increase.
Right, of course, I mean, as you see the minimum wage increase and we've, uh, we've, our lifeguard wages, and they will continue to increase. Operating of the pool itself will continue to increase, um, the maintenance cost, cost will need to increase. Um, and what we saw over the, the years of two fifteen and two thousand sixteen, we reduced the operating hours at that pool, just because it wasn't really financially viable to, the expenses related to the low usage that we were seeing compared to Hilltop Park. Um, there's a lot of reasons why, I think that Acacia's lower turnout at that swimming pool. Um, I think that with an improved playground next to it, those numbers would probably increase. Um, however, um, the pool as now is smaller, it's shallow, it's very, very shallow. And, um, just the deck space that's currently available is, is really less ideal, um, environment than, than Hilltop is.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Chris? The users of Acacia Park are not the users of the Aquatic Center. I mean, they're two distinct populations, I mean, no for, for lab, nor is he interested in fighting for volleyball or, or water polo time. Uh, and I do think that the increased use of Hilltop likely because it's been an increased user of Hilltop is directly response, or directly proportionate to the improvement of, of the playground area. I mean, when it, and, and, people didn't go there as much, and now there's got a really nice playground, people. Uh, I think that there is a large pool of people as that poor town turns over stationally, that sort of assume they're getting their pool back, uh, for kids. Uh, and I think that it is expensive, and I agree, but, uh, we spent a lot of money here on things, less discussion. I really liked the pool as we had it, I think there's a section of the population there that uses, that is not using the Aquatic Center. Uh, they would probably happily use plunge, but they like the side, and they like having a shallow pool for the little kids, uh, much like the, the people side like to use Hilltop. So I, I very much think that, uh, we should stay the course with the pool, uh, option, and although I love that design, it's gorgeous up there, but I think that there's people who are, have their little kids over there. Sorry for speaking so fast, but I'm gonna pass out.
Thank you, Chris, can you, I know it's on the staff, would you entertain us with the usage of that facility?
Sure, so the data that we have shows us that in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, we averaged about twenty swimmers, twenty people in the pool, um, per day. Yeah, open from eleven to three, so four hours a day, so you're in about five, uh, swimmers an hour. Uh, to Hilltop, which is about three or four times that many in a time.
What, what's the capacity of the pool, inter, inter numbers swimmers, it's like twenty five?
Probably about thirty to forty. Um, and, uh, again, as it is now, it's definitely geared towards children, I would say four, maybe five years older, I think that the deepest it is about two and a half feet. And I agree that with, with, um, with a better park next to it and a better playground, um, that we would definitely see the usage increase.
So one of the, the, the challenges too is the pool opened during the summer. So it's space based in winter that's being utilized, correct? So you have to think about that as well.
And those bathrooms would only be open when the pool is open?
Correct.
Uh, another question. Faintly remember hearing whispers of a splash pad at some point, this concept, is that still being around, and are there still locations in mind for? Chris is, which is people would be sad to see that pool go if they knew that in the future, we were gonna put a splash pad somewhere in this town, and maybe they would understand that, you know, once that back to take us forward.
Sure. Splash, we did have, one of the preliminary concepts included a splash pad, uh, uh, and, and people like that idea, they definitely do. Um, from operational point, maintenance wise, it's about the same as having a pool. Um, operationally from a day to day, we, we wouldn't need to staff it with, with less, so you save a little on that end. And, correct me if I'm wrong, is a restroom, restroom is still in that concept? And so, um, splash pad conversation for this particular location, we sort of felt like the limitations were was in the parking. You know, the, there are no parking space, space only street, and, um, if you put, put something in a location and you don't, it's, it's the only in town, probably the only one within seven mile radius. Um, then you'll have a lot of coming to it, so we felt that this location was probably not the best, uh, location. Uh, the Recreation and Parks Commission has definitely discussed that, and there's some conversation about maybe Hilltop, uh, of option for a splash pad and making Hilltop sort of apprehend aquatics park or location. Um, there's potentially some space there, again, um, you know, it would definitely require probably a million dollars. We, the, um, we have a hidden slide here, if you'd like, you'd like the, the design of the pool up on the screen.
It was in our, in our report, thank you. Um, yeah, I get, uh, well, I think it would be great if the people that live close by have enjoyed that. Um, I look at this project along with fifty million dollars in unfunded capital improvement projects, and then the horizon, whatever the final ends up being, but it's massive relative to our budget. Um, so, I would struggle spending additional one or one point two million dollars as in capital in addition to the operating expenses that what this would require. No, you want to rebuild the plunge, which gets far better utility. We, we think we could take a million bucks and make the plunge almost whole, if we didn't rebuild it, but replace filter systems, I don't know, what I'm saying, we could probably get better return on our money there. We're gonna get out of this facility that's operated three, and get, maybe it gets fifty kids in a day. Still, that's, that's my thought.
These facilities, you know, Hilltop and Acacia exist to serve two, two, two subsets of the population, right? For, for people with little kids, those little kids are not going to the plunge, and they're not gonna swim at the Aquatic Center, so those things were, were constructed and imagined for parents with very little kids, so you don't have to hover by the side of the, of the pool, because it's very shallow. Uh, and, and I think those amenities are important in the quality of life that we have, it's, it's difficult to schlep little kids around, uh, and schlep all the way to Hilltop is not, I mean, it's, it's, it's an easy drive, and now, and now a lot more parking. But it's still, when you're schlep in a lot of stuff, it's, it's a lot of stuff, as opposed to just up the street to this. And I think to a degree, even they may not have anticipated in the meeting we had, we would do some of those area residents a dis, I think they just presume they're getting their pool back. And I, I agree, it is a lot of money, and believe me, I, I, I sweat the in peace all the time, but I'm, we, you know, I think reasonably watch this meeting in a half hour ago, see that we bought the, my motorcycle is based upon a selection process that can, that one. Um, and we nodded our heads and said yes, I, I think this is, people assume they're getting back, it's an amenity that's served this populace for a very long time. Uh, and with some of the, the, the upgrades to it, like we did to Hilltop years ago, I, I would have no doubt that we'd see, uh, and, and they're calling in, they're so excited about this. Well, let's go to the funds. No, I, I, so I, I am incredibly sensitive to our pension obligations, I think this is, that has been a part of our budget for a long time, and while I agree that it does have, have some stationary pressure, as all things do to run. Uh, I think it is, is an interest in, in the residents of that portion of the community, uh, with kids in that age, I no longer have, uh, it, it's in our service to keep it running.
Dr. Brand, do you have a comment?
No, for, uh, some action, emotions like that.
Further discussion?
Uh, if I may.
Yeah.
Um, just in the budget and the action and the recommendation, I did want to point out that, that the concept that does remove the pool and the restrooms is also in, requires some additional fund. And, um, the original budget is five hundred thousand, that's been allocated, um, we estimate a total hundred and thirty thousand dollars is needed. There are some opportunities to potentially value engineer, um, some of the play equipment, uh, some of the fixtures down. Um, but our intention is to explore other funding opportunity, do have Prop sixty-eight stan, uh, state grant funds that supplement this project. Uh, we just learned recently that per capita program, um, that's being rolled out, and we anticipate getting a minimum of two hundred thousand dollars from that program. And the intention of those funds would be to, um, enhance existing project. You're allowed to replace funding with that money, but you have to add it to an existing project, so, uh, if in fact we can, um, firm that, that funding will be coming to us, we would, uh, be able to use, use that, this project.
Thank you, Meredith. Okay, someone like to make a motion? No one?
By example, Mr. Mayor.
I mean, for, for me, it's, I'll state it, it's one, we're a one square mile town residentially, and we have two, three, four swimming, not to mention a shuttle that takes our residents to the. I think we have an abundance of swimming. What's that? That's why we live here. Exactly. That's why I moved here, mostly because of each, but the pools are nice too. And, um, it's a lot of money, I mean, when you have a facility, Hilltop, adequate parking, plentiful parking. That is blocks, seven blocks, how far is it? Seven blocks from Hilltop?
No, it's more than that.
Oh, nine?
It's probably a mile.
A mile? All right, I've already stated, someone needs to make a motion, because I've already stated my point.
Approve the recommendation by staff.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed?
No.
No? Okay.
There you go. We tried.
We need a second motion though.
I'm, I'll make a mo- motion to approve the Washington Park, Washington Park, Washington Park and the Concept One with Pool for Acacia.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Well, aye in that case.
That's not.
Four one.
I said, yeah.
I was the no, I'm opposed, yeah. Call me the pool Scrooge. Start now.
So we do need to solve for the million dollars, and, and I shout his heads together, and, and next meeting is our mid-year budget review. Is already scheduled, we'll potentially have some solutions for, for that. I don't know that council's gonna elect those solutions.
We could train a police dog in it.
Qu- question, Meredith, uh, a year from now, we realize that's deficit we're anticipating comes to reality. And the pool is getting really low utilization despite by you playing with these gentlemen's design that's incredible. Plan B or Plan Two is still viable, right? We would just add to, we would demo the, the pool, potentially fill the, we needed to, right? What I'm getting at is, we're gonna have some decisions ahead of us in the future.
After the pool renovated?
Yes.
Um, yeah, you could, of course.
Just throwing it out there, because we have some tough decisions of us in the future. Like, how are we gonna pay for headcount, let alone?
I think probably what we would do is just like we did, you know, four years, was reduce the operating, uh, period and time and the operating costs associated with it.
Thank you. Much more difficult decision, unfortunately. Thank you for that.
We could have two, uh, two junior water polo teams bid on swimming hours in it.
One from out of town.
All right, uh, council, we're on to item seventeen, I think. No, we have, I apologize. We have, in parallel, we are running a special meeting, El Segundo City Council, and, um, I'm gonna call that to order, and we're gonna do, because I did this early, Tracy? I didn't.
It started at five o'clock.
Says seven here, but okay. Okay. So consideration impossible to authorize mayor to execute the attached letter to LA County.
Before you start, the office also has something on that.
I already started, go ahead.
Was the mayor's under the council comment, or just on? It's your meeting, mayor, so.
Consideration possible action authorized the mayor to execute the attached letter to the LA County Metropolitan Transportation Authority, AKA Metro, supporting the use of South Bay Measure M Metro to develop and implement a fiber optic project to a, to a South Bay city in reducing traffic congestion, physical, physical impact. Basically, this came up based on the South Council of Governments, of which we're a member, along with the other South Bay cities, including LA City, and Supervisor Han and others. Anyway, um, an opportunity for us to request funds from Metro Transportation for a fiber optic that we've been working on with staff for quite some time in conjunction with the COG. So I'll just really quickly give you a synopsis of the letter addressed to the board. City of El Segundo has learned that Metro tends to drastically deny eligibility of the South Bay request for four point four million from South Bay Measure M multi-subregional program for the creation and build out of a fiber optic ring and laterals connecting seventeen jurisdictions. We obviously support the proposed project. And it cites some metric objectives in reducing traffic congestion, obviously fiber op- uh, fiber optics would help in that regard. And that's about it. And so I did, I wanted to put this before the council before I signed it, asking the Metro Board to fund the South Bay's fiber optic ring and laterals project, especially construction from, from funding. So I will, um, ask the council for permission to approve, or unless there's further discussion.
I'll move to approve.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero. Okay, I'll take care of that.
He's in the bathroom.
It's okay. Don, we just approved the letter to the Metro for the funds. Good, I think, yeah, I didn't think you'd be opposed to that. Okay, now we're back to item seventeen. Chris, this is consideration of possible action to, oh, no, we're not. Now we got another, this is under the city attorney. Okay. Mark, floor is yours. Where is this on my agenda?
Under reports.
Under city attorney, okay. So we're, so we're, city attorney, before we go to the aquatics facility, is that correct? Okay. Yeah, okay, thanks.
Mayor and council, back in two thousand sixteen, the, uh, the city, uh, looked at, um, pursuant to state, state laws of voluntary was, uh, required to address accessory dwelling unit issue, which essentially is a second, um, uh, main unit on residential properties that state law was mandating. And a- as part of that, either the city could adopt it, or it would have to default to the, the law and, uh, issue permits within a hundred and twenty days to anyone wanted one that had a residential property. Uh, rather than default to the, to the state law, the city went to the Planning Commission, held, uh, at least a meeting, the Planning Commission, went to the council, and the updated regulations that implemented the accessory dwelling unit law. Pretty big change in, uh, the law that was, prior to this was considered second dwelling units, um, which were much more permissive. And the city at the time, I'm gonna say had about forty or fifty properties that were qualified for these second, seconding units. The state law, it became, um, less impressive as far as the ability to regulate their location, a number of them that could be in the residential property zone. This year, there was legislation that came forward, uh, that looked change, make a number of changes to, uh, the accessory dwelling unit, uh, legislation from two thousand sixteen that failed. But it's now in front of, uh, the legislature again, and actually a, a number of bills, and they're gonna go through brief, brief with these issues off. And one of the things the city did, uh, was not permit resources to convert it to accessory dwelling units. And as I read the statute as far as what types of structures were absolutely required to, uh, that the city had allowed to be converted, they were pool houses and, uh, those, and backyards were used for entertainment or hobby, they identified. Uh, garages were discussed in the legislation, but it appeared to me to be permissive because it wasn't a string of list of items that were mandated. And at that time, it provided that if you did, um, allow for the conversion of, you could require the parking spaces to be, uh, re- replaced. Well, the new legislation had, had a number of changes. Uh, the first is that it would remove the requirement that ADUs would apply only in single family, multi-families. And this is a little unclear as far as what's means and some of the background materials. It appears that this would potentially get applied to mixed-use properties. Um, we'll have to sit down with staff and look at how that would, uh, potentially work should this bill pass. Um, some of the used properties are really condominium properties. There are some that are, uh, on, uh, excuse, uh, with one property owner, but, um, we'll have to do this one a little further. It's a bit concerning though, as far as how ambiguous it is, as far as how it's written. Uh, the second item would take the city's current ordinance and pretty much obliterate on the garage issue as, uh, such that garages would be, the city would require to allow for garages to be converted. And additionally, um, a city could not, the city could not require those spaces to be, uh, replaced. And so, um, here in, in El Segundo, because all, all of the structures are within five hundred feet of a, um, a transit stop, the city could not require parking for the accessory dwelling units. Um, so this in, in essence would potentially eliminate all parking on a property for not the accessory dwelling unit, but also for the primary structure that's already on the property. This could have significant impacts on the parking in El Segundo that is already heavily impacted. The next one, uh, would reduce the, uh, full timeframe from a hundred and twenty to sixty days. Is a pretty quick turnaround time, gonna work with staff a bit, how that will impact what, as far as real life, uh, time it takes to process these and how problematic that will be. The fourth one is also a significant change in that the, or the, the existing law and what was implied required that one of the units be owner occupied. Eliminate that requirement. And as this point, some of the materials that, that are analyzing this bill, this would, in theory, brought an investor, investors into bill, build two units on the property, um, because there'd be no requirement that a, that a owner actually live in a unit. Uh, we are currently required the owner live, there are covenants against the property to, to make sure that, to help enforce that. If the city does not adopt the, an eighty ordinance within sixty days of, of this, um, the time this becomes law, um, then everything will deemed approved as far as applications that come, we will be heavily motivated to make sure that we, uh, get an ordinance in place now. Uh, one of the things that, and we're suggesting that a letter be written in response to this legislation, one of the things that we will, in response to this, if the council agrees. Clearly speaking, we can't, uh, adopt, we do it on an emergency basis in sixty days. It has to go to the Planning Commission. There's a certain amount of time that that has to be noticed in the papers before it goes to Planning Commission. Uh, then, uh, it has to be noticed after that meeting and not before for the council. Certain period for that, takes two council meetings, the council, it's within two meetings, it takes thirty days for an ordinance to become effective. So someone Sacramento would understand actually how long it takes to adopt an ordinance. Six, uh, provides the, uh, minimum, must be allow for at least eight hundred square feet, there are jurisdictions out there that had, uh, smaller numbers, and so they are, um, hiring that there be, uh, a certain minimum that, that can't, someone could ask for less, but as a city, we, we could require, um, that they, that they be any smaller. On the, the item seven, and actually that's now been changed since, um, and I thought I'd updated this. Uh, they are currently required to pay, uh, impact fees, but this is going to reduce it to zero for structures less than seven hundred and fifty square feet. And for structures over seven hundred and fifty square feet, seven hundred and fifty square feet or more, they only pay a quarter of impact fees and will not applicable. Um, and what this means is, uh, for people that build units in the city, there are certain impacts they pay for, for the biggest one being a probably school district. For every unit gets built, the school district gets money. So this will either eliminate that for smaller ADUs or get only ninety-five percent of what the school district would normally receive. Eight, I'll, at this point in time. Nine, uh, we'll have to submit to HCD and, uh, the State Department of Housing and Community Development. They're a pretty, uh, pro-housing group, and, uh, we had some disputes with them over our current ordinance and similar agreement. Uh, and so I'm a bit concerned about the, and you couple with, uh, ten, which is gonna authorize HCD to adopt its own guidelines to implement state law. So I would assume from that that we're going to get interpretations favoring, um, the out that HCD would like to have occur with regard to ADUs. Um, and that will be, that will lead to some litigation as far as who's actually in charge, what their authority is, but it is problematic as far as what. It does, uh, if, to the extent we, uh, have ADUs that we require, if we were to, uh, if they were affordable, um, count them for our housing element purposes. Process that, we would need to, uh, provide, uh, and qualification, like we were talking about earlier as far as qualifying people for the D.R. Horton project. It would be that kind of a process. Number twelve is, um, really pretty troubling in that, that this was last year's legislation too, that it would preclude the city from, in theory, making sure that the structures met the building code requirements. And the language is odd in that it talks about, well, well, if safety, then you can potentially enforce it right away, but if not, then it's, uh, it could take up to ten years of, you have to give the person ten years to comply. But building code is all about safety. Now, there's a component deals with environmental issues as far as energy savings and whatnot, but ninety percent of the building code is about safety. So I'm not certain what part of the building code they would want us to ignore, um, as far as the safety of a structure. And pretty, they're saying someone could bootleg a unit in, and we couldn't go in and require them to make that, um, comply with the building code, and we would be in front of a judge arguing about, well, whether or not that light socket in the shower is really a, a big life safety issue or not. I mean, and, and, but we've actually got picked some of those in town that have happened over time, and, you know, so it leaves, it, it leaves building officials unable to position, well, that's safe, but maybe not that unsafe, and this is the point of how building codes. So that's my presentation, and what I, I think for from council is whether the council wants, like we did last year, to put together a letter opposing this legislation. And I would also, there's another bill, five eighty-seven, which is equally ambiguous and problematic, and that it is going to potentially allow nonprofits to go in and buy properties and build these accessory dwelling units, partly from the primary dwelling unit. And it's not very well written, it's how that would, it would not really match up with any of our existing contracts or how we do business as far as, um, outlines and things. I, I, I can't more than that. Point in time, it really is a few sentences and a piece of legislation, which will create some very complex problems, I think, for the city, for the property owners. So I, I'm not certain how well, it doesn't appear to be very well thought out at this point, but I don't wanna raise that. But for direction from council, you want, uh, my office to work with the city manager's office and put together a letter opposing this legislation?
I'll move approval of authorizing this attorney to draft a letter on be, on our behalf opposing SB thirty.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Five oh, thank you.
And the only thing I would add is if this looks, it's going to pass, we're gonna track it closely, we'll be back to council for direction about how to proceed because we have to move relatively quickly to comply with.
Thank you, Mark. All right, item seven. All right, item seven, we'll see later, 17. Consideration impossible actually allocate space to South Bay United and Trojan Water Polo Club, clubs in El Segundo, United, Unified, excuse me, School District Aquatic, 40 East Grand Avenue, fiscal impact, NA. Your councilman Pimentel recusing himself, thank you. Meredith?
Yes, thank you very much. So in the report that you, your agenda, that provides some detailed background information regarding the selection process of aquatic center use and staff actions throughout this process. I'm happy with the report tonight that we do have agreements in place with both Southern United and Trojan Water Polo Clubs regarding their usage at both the aquatic center and at the plunge. South Bay United was granted priority based on residency rates and were allotted 60% of the available space as well as the first right to choose their days of the week, to which they selected Wednesday, Friday, and Saturday. Gin granted the remaining days, Tuesday, Thursdays, and Sundays for 40% of the available space. And these ratios are consistent through the allocation for the two swimming clubs, which was also 60% went to Alpha Aquatics and 40% went to Beach Cities Swimming. I wanted to take the opportunity to thank both the leads, those water polo clubs, as well as from the two swimming clubs, Alpha and Beach Cities Swimming, for bearing with us through this selection process. It's been the first of its kind here, obviously with the new facility, a lot of learning lessons along the way. And I think, you know, wanted to take the moment to thank all of the, all of the, the swimmers, the leaders of the groups who have really expressed their passion and paid attention to the matter. I think for me, what it's done is demonstrate, you know, how critically important this facility is to, to the community and we look forward to working with everybody and those groups thrive. So that's the report I have tonight, but I'm.
Thank you, Meredith. So you're running just to approve your recommendation to allocate, allocate the spaces you previously described, 60-40, to South Bay United and Trojan respectively.
That's correct, and we have comments from those groups.
Great. I would like to move that unless there's council comments.
I just had a question. When will these water polo clubs be in the pool?
Starting as early as Monday.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments from council? Approval of House recommendation?
Second.
Okay, second from Ms. Nicole, all in favor?
Aye.
All, all three, one. Thank you, Meredith. A lot of work put into that. I see Eric of Trojan Water Polo, thank you, Kirk's here, but thank you to him as well. All right, moving on to, let's see here, reports, manager.
Briefly, at the city council meeting, we're counsel decision to participate in the South Bay scooter program, at least to develop that program and then make, we want to participate. You did ask staff to report back on the status at this meeting, other South Bay cities. I can report tonight that the Hermosa Beach Council has taken a similar action. They've directed staff to participate in the pilot program. Manhattan Beach, Madonna, they scheduled this item for, for action. So the other three is, has signed on. In other reports, I'm going to ask Ken Berkman to come up and in a moment to provide an update on the trash conversion and some important information, website information, contact information from that. Did want to publicly thank Chevron for, for the funding, our fire fleet. I, I think what is important for council to know is, is that we are now in, have new or almost new gratis fire fleet. And the city should be in good stead the next eight to 10, with respect to that fleet. What it also does is take, take the dollars that we were going to use in the equipment replacement fund and allow us to allocate them out, all the other equipment out that fund to be fully funded there. So that is a significant gift, but also a significant achievement from a budgetary standpoint for the city of El Segundo. And with that, I'd like Ken Berkman to come up and provide an update on the trash conversion.
Honorable, our council members, we have some exciting times going in May. We have our automated trash services with Edco starting then. Wanted to take minutes and just provide an update for you and the, we've been having, staff's been having weekly meetings with Edco since last week in January. We know that we have a collections schedule that will be reduced from the five day manual collections to four day collections starting May 1st. No collections will be done on Friday. The single family homes and duplex brochures were mailed March. The three and four units, letter from myself to the property owners about the service change was mailed March 11th and was followed by a brochure from Edco on the 12th. Edco launched the El Segundo specific website. Services in March included interactive collection day lookup feature, collection day, recycling and green waste education dos and don'ts, our holiday schedule for collections, news and events, and FAQs. And ample carts were put out and placed a few weeks from the city here outside of council chambers at the library, center, house, so people can check them out. We've had eight community meetings from March 22nd through April 6th. And as with all their cities, Edco is always involved in the events and they attended city events with, they were at the Arbor Day Festival this past, be Farmer's Market for the Earth Day celebrations, Thursday, the 25th. The service, the new cart will be commencing delivery April 24th, is a week before the first collection day of May 1st. And then each resident unit, week before the collection day, going forward for a week. The old cans that folks have, have can be picked up after if residents desire, they just put them out there with a note to take this, basically. After two weeks, people can swap out carts for different sizes or ask for additional carts. And if folks would like, they can contact Edco beforehand to get those sizes at 105402977, repeat that number later, but 3105402977. Edco has been talking out to all the property owners of the four units and personally visiting those units as well as the single family home complexes upon request if people need some assistance, figure out logistics is going on at their specific properties. Also wanted to talk about our sweeping schedule coming up with the collection schedule going from five days to four days. This sweeping schedule had to change with that as well. As council knows, around our schools for individual issues with traffic and pedestrian safety, we went forward, I'll be going forward with an RP to have a full holistic traffic and pedestrians instead for all schools to make sure it's consistent across the board for how we want to address those issues. However, we use this opportunity to maximize the efficiency of our street sweeping schedules. For example, let's not sweep, you know I was going to do that. Let's not sweep the street the day before the traffic occurs, that's an action, for example. But we started with the district, to Superintendent Moore, she reached out to the principals to see what their thoughts were about the no parking situation and the sweeping schedules around the schools. And basically the request, first of all, was to get the no parking and sweep out of the, to 10 a.m. timeframe, the drop off kind of time, and to see if we could provide alternate side of the street parking at all the, at all the schools. There's a ton of work done over the past couple of months with staff and with our sweeping contractor because, while it seems simple, it's very complex because once you, it's like domino, just the other streets, you got to figure out a whole new kind of route when you move one. The cool news is that we were able to accommodate almost all the requests that the district wanted. And this does mean some more streets where it would be impacted because of that domino effect. So some more days and or times had to be changed as opposed to we just left the schools the way they were, for example, with just looking at the efficiency we can, we can implement. But the bottom line, from what we heard from the schools, all of us over the, for me, past couple of years, hopefully with kids' safety improving and power amount, we'll all agree it'll be worth it in the end. Those sweeping and time maps will be posted later, probably by Thursday, I believe. The, one of the key things we want to happen is all the two, two at the most three hour window for the no parking will remain in our town. So all that said, we're going to reach on the El Segundo website and website notices in the Herald, more mailing, El Segundo Facebook, the carts delivered with service state tags and sweeping change notices on the carts. Nixle will coordinate those with SBD about the sweeping changes. Edco has a newsletter, the Environmental Times they'll prepare. So somehow we'll reach everybody with the information. But if we, myself, I'm Alan, our senior management analyst, phone call away, as is Edco at 3105402977 and help folks get through this transition. So, thank you.
In your weekly meetings, are you guys discussing how many people have already signed up? Is it most people? Is it not as you'd hoped? Are these trash cans just going to show up on everyone's step, whether they call or sign up?
You need, well, what about the threes and fours and the single families and duplexes?
Single fam.
Yeah, they'll, they'll show up. They'll be there today with the tags. I mean, these are folks that have been individually, to with brochures and mailers.
The question was if someone does nothing for whatever reason, what happens?
If somebody does nothing, they will have carts delivered to their.
Okay.
Thanks.
What's the deadline to sign up? Like a line to?
Well, the, the first bill would be in early May, so we're all going to be billed quarterly, when I say the, the single family homes, the duplexes, and also the city for the subsidy of the $15 to the 2126 unit.
Say if they don't sign up, their trash gets still picked up, but when they actually do sign up, they're still going to have to pay the back fee?
Yeah, Edco's tracking the, as a business, they're tracking all the residents and who's signed up and who has not, I think, to answer member Nichols' question.
Well, yes, for discussion purposes, have you guys signed letters yet? Done?
No, no, just done. We don't need to sign up, just go get them first.
Just give this feedback. I went through the process, mailer, went to the website, typed in all my, fully expected to be, set up some sort of payment account. Nothing. And I then expected, oh, well, I'll, I'll get an email. There's probably an email in my email box right now to then click a link to go set up some sort of financial, and there was, and so I, I kept thinking to myself, okay, they asked me for money at some point. I'm pretty sure all the actions that were on this mailer properly, and I wanted to do it honestly, I fully well expected to get bombarded with hundreds of emails. I wanted to make sure, yeah, I've gone through the process, this is what you do, walk you through it. And so I just, I'm curious from them, how many people have actually signed up?
We haven't tracked that, but.
You asked that question, weekly call with them? Just, just to out?
How many individual, single family, home and duplex property owners have signed up?
Yeah.
Okay.
Ultimately, the way the process works under our code and state is that everyone's going to be deemed then signed up.
Right.
And your only option is opt out, and you can only opt out if you're going to self haul your own trash, which means you personally, you can't pay, you personally, or someone in your family has to put your trash in some sort of vehicle or something and transport it to a trash. So that's.
So they'll just get mailed a bill, is basically.
That's true. That's what I was going to say. Everybody will receive a bill, paper bill mailed, and you have a choice to, for continuing it by mail or by phone or paying by online, easy pay, automatic setup. So the first action is you get a bill in the mail, mail, and then sign up.
How do they know, say if I, no one, you get the trash cans delivered, and I know who they're sending the bill to?
The trash will be delivered with hanging, the tags, all the information, the service, as well as what I mentioned.
If I don't do anything, I use my new trash cans, how do, when the, how do they know who to address it to?
It's Edco itself.
But two.
To who? The owner, property owner X?
Property owner.
They have the property owner. It would be the property owner's bill.
So, so hearing council pretty clearly is that we need some more communication about how people create their accounts and sign it.
I just heard today from someone who's, she's pretty well versed in the community across the street that she didn't even realize that May 1st is happening. So there's certainly still a contingent of the public realizes, I mean, it's not paying attention.
We will work with Edco to push out more information about the dates, how you sign up, what happens, how you pay your first bill, how you can pay, payment options.
And, you know, she loved Facebook Mark, but there was a Facebook discussion about this about, well, if I'm a renter, who's going to get the bill? Landlord get the bill, or am I going to get the bill? Or how is this, and it's, and renters understand based upon that discussion was that the homeowner was getting the bill.
Property owner?
Property owner.
Right.
Yes, and so in regards to the tag on the carts and everything, just making sure that people understand this transition will help this transition be more successful and less painful for us.
The tags are already in production, but we'll check it out to make sure we get them to mess up.
Awesome.
A rough May for your department. We're not having the trash pickup on Fridays. We have the sweeping on Fridays, or are they also cutting back four days?
Sweeping will be done one or two days after the collection days.
Friday.
Including Friday.
You could be swept, okay.
Right. Okay, any other questions for Ken? Ken, thank you, Greg.
Thank you. All right, moving on to city clerk. Okay, city treasurer's not here. Councilmember Pimentel is gone, has back pain going on. Councilmember Cole.
I just wanted to invite everyone to join you, sir, at your breakfast on Friday morning at the Automotive Drive Museum, 7 a.m. The mayor's Friday breakfast. Mayor Boils is going to delight with us with anecdotal stories, right?
In the 180 seconds that I, that I guess, no, it's really, you know, speaker, but yes, it's an incredible tradition. I'm, I'm up there with all of you. Thank you.
I wanted to say thank you to Mattel Mattel, partnered with the Automotive Driving Museum. We were there for, there for running for the kids' corner, for this Hot Wheels corner. And one of the presenters on the night told a little story about the president and CEO of Mattel, when the Hot Wheels was created, the designer walked in and rolled the car across the table and he said, man, those are some Hot Wheels. And the name stuck, and I thought it was, it was another little fun fact about El Segundo that I share with the community. That's it.
Thank you, Scott. Councilmember?
Happy Easter.
Thank you, sir.
Um, yes, I want to remind everyone about one about the run, and I also wanted to ask this council to look at the fees that we're charging for the run. Currently, last year they paid about $7,000 and they're being asking for $15,000. And that money directly from the run goes to schools and I, since the, the city no longer funds schools and they have to, the foundation has to fund libraries, I think it would be, we should look at being either, at least having, having made the fee that they paid last year and not pay the increase definitely the fee. So I'm not sure how, if we should back or if we can vote on it tonight.
No, it would need to be agendized at a future meeting.
All right, so it could, I'll bring that at the next, the next council.
It would be retroactive at that point, right?
Yeah.
I mean, if we decided to do that, it would be after the race.
You can retroactive.
Well, I believe we need to have the other council members ask for that to be agendized at a future meeting.
Can we agendize the pricing and the, and the cost of the run for education at a future meeting?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, girl. Continue, Mary.
Continue, Mayor.
Um, I also wanted to thank the rec park and Musketeers, next, second generation, next generation for, they, they had last Saturday, we planted some fruit trees, rec park, an avocado tree, and added some mulching to the beds. And I know that the rec is going to continue to look at, next six or seven months, the planter on Pine Street and just really, you know, ensuring that we're taking care of, you know, enhancing our, and I know that the rec park is also going to be looking at, I should say, is looking at the library park. And we did the opening library, the new library area. It's nice, it's very nice, open, and one of the things I'm challenging Melissa on is to, opening up the doors, the library, so that you can actually take the books out and out into work and use the, as part of the library. So hopefully we'll get there. And I want to give a thank you to Officer Rell. He shared his story with the 99 at the end of last month for, for El Segundo High School's students and talked about side awareness. And I just want him, give him a heartfelt thanks for sharing his story and just students have helped, because it really, I think, had a great impact on, and if we, one life, that's one life, that's, that's a good thing. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Putnam. Couple quick, we had a great state of the city and I want to thank Colonel Igle at the Air Force Base and gracious host, Darrell Stewart, I'm sure I'm forgetting, somebody in the department did incredible job, put together Barbara, Marcia, incredible work all around, it was a great effort, not just for the video, but for the event itself. So thank you very much. And that's all I have this evening.
My name is Lee Davis, long-term, live on Sycamore. Just wanted to thank you, show you a little information from the Parks and Rec Commission last month, is that when we were reviewing the Acacia Park, there were a board committee member who actually brought up a pool and getting a new pool. And we all looked at it with our cap improvement budget, very difficult time saying that we would want to do it. We all wanted to do it, but we all realized that it was a financial burden. I'm glad to hear that because I actually voted against it, which I love the idea of a new pool, as you can imagine, hard to believe, I'm sure. But I really think if there's the option, I, I'm sure that the residents ought to hear it, heard a number of people wanting it with restricted, very difficult facility to do anything more than just daily drop-in and it's going to be very limited. I also think it may stress our budget for the plunge relation as we have one pot of money to reach from. So I was just ecstatic to hear that and I look forward to seeing what our for the center and the evaluation criteria are now that we are teams in the pool. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. All right, that concludes public communications. And Tracy, we're adjourned, we don't need to close out particular individual meetings, do we? Okay, great. Okay, we're closing on both, the special and the other session, we're adjourned at 9:29.